Welcome to the May 23rd, 2017 Recreation Commission Meeting. And at this time, for those wishing to address the Recreation Commission on any item on the agenda and under any public appearance, please complete a spirit card located at the entrance of the chambers. And any person with disabilities who require auxiliary aids or services in attending or participating in this meeting should call the Department of Library and Recreation Services as soon as possible for prior to the meeting. So, may we have a call to order, please?
That's your job.
Okay. We're testing you.
May we all stand and pledge their flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, may we have the roll call, please?
You may. Commissioner Luna?
Present.
Commissioner Prognio?
Here.
Commissioner Landos?
Present.
Vice Chair Cisson?
Present.
Chair Pastor?
Here. Okay, may we have the approval of the agenda for this meeting tonight?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, those that have approved the agenda do say aye.
Aye.
And secondly, the approval of the last minutes of March 28th, 2017. May I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay.
Second that?
Alright, and those that favor approving the minutes of March 28th, do say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and... Director's reports.
Thank you. It gives me great pleasure this evening to do something we've never done at one of these meetings, to recognize the heroic lifesaving efforts of our lifeguards that work at Giamona Pool. And what prompted this is an incident that they're saving lives all the time out there, but there was one extraordinary incident on Sunday, February 12th, that happened at Giamona Pool with a patron that developed a very serious medical problem. And the four young lifeguards on duty that evening were able to tend to the victim, if that word is the correct word to use?
Tend.
And stabilize him and comfort him until he was able to be transported to Stanford Medical, where he underwent immediate surgery. And he called after he was released from the hospital and expressly thanked the efforts of these fine individuals and said, "Without their intervention that evening and their calm demeanor, he would have died," and his doctors at Stanford told him that. And I think it's appropriate that we recognize that outstanding effort this evening. So, actually, I'd like maybe the chair or the chairs designated to make the presentations. We do have commendations for each of the four lifeguards on duty.
This is great news.
The first one is Christine Chin.
An applause.
The second is Cole Oliver. Accepting on his behalf, Chris Mariano, his supervisor.
Applause.
Tiffany Chin. And Jennifer Gittens. You know, now that we've given them all away, I can't read the wording on it. Basically, it's recognizing their valiant efforts on the evening of Sunday, February 12th, at Giamona Pool. And the person they saved, I don't believe is in the audience tonight, but I've talked to him twice subsequently, and he was very, very grateful. And I thought it was appropriate. And this is, like I said, we've never done anything like this. I've been here 21 years, I don't remember staff being commended for lifesaving actions at a Recreation Commission meeting, but it seemed appropriate. And, you know, it's out of the ordinary, but it is also what they're trained very well to do. So, as the director, and I'm sure on behalf of the Commission and the entire city of Daly City, we are very grateful for your actions on February 12th.
Through the chair, could we ask them to come up and take a picture with us?
Or I'd also ask if they want to recount their version of it.
Oh, yeah, we want to hear. What happened?
You were there, I wasn't there.
How did you know you needed to save them, through the chair?
Yes.
So, he came, so right after lap swim ended, he was changing in the locker room, and he came up to the front desk still unchanged, and he was still in his swimwear. And he was telling the other lifeguard, Cole, that he couldn't breathe and how his left side was feeling kind of painful. And so, I was listening, and I called for the other guards to come help. And Cole called 911 after that, and the three of us were calming him down and reassuring him and all that, and then we waited for the paramedics. I went outside to go meet up with them and tell them what happened, and yeah.
Wow.
Wow.
What an amazing response.
And I'm going to be nosy now, because don't you all want to know? What did he have that he had to have surgery?
It was a heart-related thing, but not something that CPR would have helped. So, they did the right thing by not administering CPR, because that might have made it worse, actually, he said.
Wow, nice.
And that was a very humble recounting of what happened. From what I understood, you know, this was at closing time on a Sunday evening, and it was fairly chaotic, and there were kids and grownups, and, you know, the excitement of the moment. And from what he said, they did an extraordinary job of keeping the situation calm and keeping him comfortable, which according to his doctors was critical for his survival. If he had tried to leave, we wouldn't be here tonight.
Wow.
Well, I just want to say, your example of what you just did up here today, just to step forward and recap what had happened. I sensed the calmness that you had had that day, and I sense that that's how it is with all the staff, if something like that should happen. So, I commend the supervisors for the training that they provided the staff there and the Daly City Department for looking after our crew and keeping good efforts out there for them. So, thank you for your efforts, and thank you for being so calm. Romeo?
Thank you, thank you too.
Now, can we have a picture?
And before we do that too, I also want to acknowledge the great training and supervision they get of Chris Mariano and Romeo Benson, who oversee the aquatics and our wonderful lifeguard staff. So, thanks to you guys two for everything you do. Now, you can do a picture wherever you want.
You guys can come, come on.
You're going to have them come up here?
Absolutely. Don't you think it's like the nicer place to be? The lighting's better here.
Let's trade chairs.
Oh, yeah, yeah, let's put them here.
Let's let them sit.
Let them sit, yeah. You're the honored guests.
You want to sit here? You sit here.
We need social media contact.
Be comfortable. Together kiddos.
We need social media contact.
I love it. Come on, Joseph. Come on. Don't you feel like stars here? This is awesome.
Alright.
Great, thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Awesome. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome to stay up here.
Isn't that cool?
Yeah.
Thank you, what a great way.
Yeah, what a great way to start an evening meeting with good news like that.
And we have more good news coming on the next item. We talked a little bit during the course of the season about our youth basketball program, but now that it's over and we've transitioned to a new season, we thought we'd do a look back at our youth baseball season and a recap by the man who put it all together for the second year in a row. I'd like to move to Carl Eduardo Melones.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, today, we're going to be, I'll be talking about our 2017 Youth Basketball League. It started in January, ended in late March. Unfortunately, we missed the last meeting, so here I am to recount just a little bit background information about the league this year. So, our program is designed for boys and girls, so they're individual divisions, all separated by grade, third through eighth grades. The third grade is set up to be an instructional league. We want to make sure that the third graders kind of get the sense of what, you know, basketball's going to be, less competition. So, we do provide, our league is structured around having a low-key competition. Basketball, there's going to be a winner or loser. It's good that the children know that this is part of sports. It's how they win, how they lose that we focus on. So, we emphasize sportsmanship, and most importantly, it is, I'm not doing that, is to have fun. So, let's see. All our teams are coached by volunteer coaches, whether they be parents, teachers, or just good Samaritans in a community that want to help the youth. They're all volunteers. They all have to attend a mandatory meeting, essentially to go over rules and expectations of them. Yeah, I'm not sure what's... But yes, and then they also do a screener that our department collects and makes sure that everyone that's going to be with the youth is acceptable, so. Oh, anytime there's any questions, feel free to stop me. So, registration and enrollment, we start in October, so later this year in October, we'll be starting our registration for our, for next year, for 2018. And it goes until about December. The reason we start so early with registrations, we want to get as many kids as possible, and I'll go over the numbers that we got for this year. Those that do, this is, yeah, it's very tribute to, so for those, those that do, there's two ways to enroll in our program, it's individually, so everyone. We do get the flyer out to the community, to all the schools in Daly City, some South City schools as well. So, we try and get the word out as much as possible. They can sign up individually, or they can come into our league as a team. For the teams, they're all school teams, so if you're going to come in as a school team, all the participants on that team go to the same school. We changed that last year. So, I've been doing this program for the last eight years, and last year, we changed the rule where it was mandated that if a school team came in, they had to be all from the same school. This year, we did change the eligibility rule for school teams. We added co-ed teams. So, we do have boys and girls divisions. However, we did find that some teams didn't have enough girls to field the team, but they really wanted to play with their classmates, so they played with the boys. And they, like any other sport, there's girls that can keep up, there's no doubt. I've always, in the years I've been doing this, I was waiting for the day or the year that we'd have co-ed teams. This was the year, and it was success. There was no issues where anyone had complaints. We did talk to the parents and teachers and coaches about expectations of the girls and the boys especially, but we had no issues with having girls playing with the boys. And we also had an eligibility rule change. We did have some third-grade teams that just didn't have enough players, so we allowed some second graders to play. Again, kids start very early, and some of these second graders are just as good as third or fourth or fifth graders, so. So, it worked out in the end. So, this is a list of all the participating schools that we had in our program this year. So, for the most part, we think we got all our Daly City schools. We do have a few SF schools in there, but we did have a good representation. Those schools that aren't there probably did have kids that signed up individually and played in our league as well. So, to begin, for the beginning of the season, we did have a free basketball clinic. We had over 80 participants. It was held on November 12th at Ben Franklin Middle School. The clinic was presented by SF Basketball Academy. They used to be Youth for Fitness and Education, YFE, but are shifting their concentration to basketball, but they're the ones that presented this free clinic to the community. And it was free for anyone that wanted to attend. They didn't have to register for our program in order to attend this program, so it was a great addition. So, our program runs from January to March. Depending on how many teams, it always kind of, it fluctuates to when we start and when we end. But we do hold weekly practices this year. It was for 10 weeks. Each team gets about an hour and a half to practice each week at one of our gyms. We utilize all seven gyms that we have in Daly City. For the teams, we always, for any participant, we guarantee at least seven games for them, which we found is about the right number. Sometimes they get eight, if they may get to championships and playoffs, they get additional games, but for the most part, everyone gets seven games. Sometimes there's forfeits, those we can't do anything about, but at least we try and schedule them. So, we do play on Friday nights and Saturdays. We start as early as nine in the morning, sometimes usually at 10, but we would go until five o'clock, so it was a full day at seven different gyms every week. And then we would have playoffs and championships, and we had those in a week or so. So, it gets really packed in. So, these are kind of the totals we had for this year. So, we had over 900 individual participants, so I was thinking about this the other day. It might be the biggest of the programs we run as far as when it comes to individual participants. We do get, you know, summer program or after-school program that get ongoing numbers throughout the year, but as far as individuals, we had over 900. The only reason I don't have exact numbers, some teams didn't turn in rosters or I lost the paperwork, so I couldn't count out the rosters. We did have 119 individual registrants. That means that we created teams out of those 119. We created 13 Daly City teams that participated in various divisions and grades. We had a total of 109 teams in our league this year. I think it's a reduction from last year, but it actually helped us out as far as scheduling and making it easier for me, essentially. But it ended up working out very well this year. And we had over 130 volunteer coaches. Some would stay, stayed throughout, for the most part, everyone stayed throughout the season. Some dropped off here and there, again, they're volunteers, work, other commitments get in the way, but we're very proud to say we had over 130 coaches. So, we did a little bit of number crunching. We played exactly 420 games. Forty-four of those were playoff games, and we had 13 championship games. We contracted 32 different referees to help us out throughout the season, and we had six indifferent scorekeepers. The scorekeepers were usually high school kids that wanted to participate, so they were contracted to keep score at each game. And this is just a breakdown of the division champions. So, for fourth grade, we had the Daly City Warriors, that was a team that we created, one of those Daly City teams. Fourth grade was MH Tobias. Fifth grade, we had the Silver Wolves in one division, the Bulldogs in the other. The fifth grade girls, St. Thomas More Broncos, coached by none other than our director. So, they were the fifth grade girls' champions. Sixth grade boys, we had the Daly City Spartans, another Daly City team we put together, Holy Angels for the other division. Fortunately, this year, we didn't have a sixth grade girls' division. It's the first time that we haven't had a division in a certain grade and gender, but those girls that did sign up for sixth grade ended up playing in the seventh grade, so we kind of still were able to play. But seventh grade boys, we had the Ben Franklin Falcons, the Bulldogs, Bulldogs for the girls. The Trojans swept, so Policy just swept the eighth grade boys. And we had the Fernando Roadrunners win the eighth grade girls' division. And I think that's it, yeah. Any questions?
Through the chair. What is the cost or the fee per student?
So, for individual registrants, it's 105 for Daly City residents, 131 for non-residents. For those that choose to come in as a team, they pay a team fee of 331 for Daly City schools. If they need practice, there's an additional fee of 110. And then if you're a non-resident, or a non-Daly City school, they pay a little bit more, 415 and 525 if they need practice.
That's very reasonable.
So, it is very reasonable. It is something that we're looking at. We're getting to the point where we're having to pay our referees a little bit more to get them to come up to Daly City. A lot of them like to go down the peninsula, so we are, we will be planning on that for the next time. Whether that means increasing fees or reducing the number of teams we take in, there is something that has to be done as far as the revenue and the expenditures that we have.
At least to break even.
At least, or at least close. We'll never break even for this program. It's just too big. There's too many other costs tied into it, but it's something that we want to get as close as possible to.
And at the end, do they get each of these kids to get, they get like a scholarship or a certificate?
So, they don't get scholarships or certificates. For those that do make it to the playoffs and championships, there are medals that we award them. Unfortunately, again, it's the costs. We just can't cover it with what we're charging right now, it's kind of frozen, which is good, it gives us the opportunity for more people to play, but then we do have to make sacrifices.
You mentioned all the volunteers.
Yes.
And from the Commission to, through you, I'd like to extend a big thank you to the volunteers for stepping forward, because those are, you know, they can put in thousands of hours, and you add them all up together.
Oh, definitely.
And it, and they're coming from work sometimes, or they're getting ready to start their shift in the evening work. But give them a big thank you too, and if you ever, when you get together next year to start the season again, and you do have all those parents there at one location, let us know. Because I'd like to be able to personally represent the Commission and say thank you to them as well.
Yeah, they, at the very minimum, they're putting in at least three hours a week, at minimum. Most of these, they're, you know, they're devoting themselves, so they're away from, you know, their practice, they're meeting up at schools and practicing on their own time, planning, making, you know. This year, I ended up having, not having to, but couldn't find some coaches for two of the third grade teams. So, I ended up stepping in, and I know how much of a commitment it can be. So, it's, I always make sure that they know, and I do what I can to make sure that if I can move games around, or if I can assign them a practice set that works better for their schedule, I do that, just to show them how grateful we are for them to help us. Because if it wasn't for them, there's no way we could get, have this many, this many kids playing in our league every, every week and have it as successful as it's been, so.
From the perspective of the participants, the youth, the youngsters that are, you know, that were coached by all the volunteers, I'd kind of like be the sounding board for them, and just say, "Thank you, coaches, for teaching me and being there for, for us." Because sometimes they don't realize it until they're much older.
Yeah.
And then they'll be shopping in the mall, they'll say, "You were my coach back then when I was little." But let them know that their kids, their youth, their daughters are saying thank you to their parents for coming out.
Yeah, and I'm just going to throw out there, my kids are grown in college, and, or out of college, actually, all of them out of college, but they played in grammar school. A lot of kids, you can't, you love it, you play it, you're good, but when you get even to high school, it's hard to play, in college to play, so that's your, I keep saying, as I get older, it's your memories, you know?
Yeah. And this is probably, for someone like, especially once you get to the eighth grade, this is kind of it. This is the last opportunity for anyone just to come sign up. I mean, there's other opportunities out there, but it's one of the last opportunities for like eighth grader, seventh graders to actually get to playing this type of, you know, arena, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you again for running an outstanding program.
Oh, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What he left out of his report is, not only are these coaches putting in a lot of hours, he was always the last one in the office every night, trying to coordinate schedules and gym times and shuffling stuff around and dealing with the, you know, when you get, you get 900 kids, that's 1,800 parents.
Yeah.
I see the looks on the face. As smooth as the operation is, you know, there's problems that crop up between, there's some friction between teams and players, and he did a great job of keeping it out of my office. So, he handled all of those little things that bubble up over the course of the season, dealt with all the coaches, and the crazy schedule of seven gyms over the whole schedule, so thank you very much, Eduardo. He gets a race.
Thank you for you, Leo.
I can't discuss personnel matters.
Sorry, through the chair, how many, are you it? Are there more staff than you? I mean, how many are you? I'm, me, myself, and I?
No, so, I mean, we do have a lot of hourly staff that assist. There's other full-time staff that'll assist throughout the week, but I'm the where it stops, like kind of essentially, kind of overseeing everything, making sure that everyone that was supposed to be where they were supposed to be, and just make sure that if needed, I can jump in whenever I need to, so, you know. After a while, kind of, the wheels turn no matter what, but, but like Joseph said, there's always going to be things that come up that catch you off guard, and you just, you know, you learn, and you deal with it, and you move on, so.
Thanks for going the extra mile.
Of course.
Sometimes, like, watching a man try to put together a jigsaw puzzle, and there's five or six pieces missing, and the frustration of trying to like, you know, it's got to work somehow, and in the end, it always, it always does work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your effort. Our next item is a video that has not yet debuted, so I'm only going to give you a little sample. You can take one home and view it in the privacy of your own home, if you can pass that out. At MH Tobias School, it's one of the sites where we do after-school youth recreation program, and for whatever reason, that site likes to put stuff together to commemorate the wonderful year they've had over there. So, not only have they put a video together, which, which they one-upped themselves, last year, they did a slideshow presentation, this year, they did a full-on 20-minute documentary. They also do a yearbook that I'm going to share with you. And a little newsletter, so.
So, can you submit this to something in the cities and get an award? Is there something in the county or the state? Just, just asking, I'm sure there is.
I am sure that has crossed the mind of the person who directed it. I've passed out their yearbook, and here's their, the April edition of their newsletter. The May one is probably being put together as we speak, so.
So, no other, pardon me, through the chair, at no other locations?
Not to the extent that MH Tobias does. Other schools have newspaper, newsletter kinds of things, but as far as the AYRP programs, Tobias always seems to outdo themselves. So, again, we are chartering in an area that we haven't explored before, trying to show a DVD at our meeting, so wish me luck, it worked a little bit during rehearsal.
What I was just saying was, I want to go here and play. You should check it out, it's pretty good.
Want to be a youth again.
Sure, take your time, take your time. They're definitely having more fun than I have, I'm sure.
During after-school program, we start off with homework time, then we have snack time and after we do arts and crafts with our friends or play fun activities outside. My favorite part of the program is that I get to spend time with my friends because Veronica are very nice friends to me. Deal, deal, deal. That's bad grammar. Bye!
Hello, my name is Dylan, I'm in second grade and I like homework time because the rec leaders are very helpful and they get my homework done easily and fast.
My name is Emma Carpio and what I like about the after-school program is homework time because I get lots of help from the very smart rec leaders here.
My favorite thing about Chaos Target is that you, that you can have a lot of fun.
Well, I guess I get people up.
My name is Jaden and in the
You, uh, through the chair, you'll have to let us know when they win an award for this.
We will. And uh, this was the first official sneak peek. They're doing the premiere on June second, you guys remember? I think, I believe it's June second. So we got advanced copies for you guys. It's about twenty minutes long, so you just saw the first two, two chapters or so. Um, there's nine chapters in all.
And, and just so we hear it, um, the program, the type of program that they have, this program is also at other schools?
It is, yes.
So what, what they see here, what we see here is pretty much
The program is duplicated at other school sites. They just did a good job of documenting over the course of the year and both in, in the written newsletter that they put out, uh, their yearbook and the video.
And um, this is the after-school program, so people do pay a fee for it.
They do indeed.
What happens during summertime?
Um, a lot of them transition. So this is A Y, A Y R P, the after-school youth recreation program. Summertime, we transition, transition to the S Y R P program, the summer youth recreation program. And in fact, registration is happening right now. It is still the best bargain in town. Um, not only we have S Y R P, but a variety of other sports-themed camps this summer as well.
Great.
So don't wait because summer is right. Pardon?
They're not sold out yet?
They are not sold out, actually. We, we are a little bit behind where we were in terms of the numbers compared to last year. Um, there's a little more competition in, in the area, but there's also a lot of grant money coming into Daily City through Measure K and the, the Big Lift Initiative, if you're familiar with that. Daily City has some schools where they, they measure reading proficiency at the third grade is kind of an indicator of how a student's gonna do. It projects out pretty well. And Daily City has a couple of schools where the reading proficiency at third grade, uh, as many sixty percent of the students are below that target. So that's the bad news. The good news is there's, there's a lot of money being put towards trying to fix that problem. And part of it is this program offered through the county department of education and it's one hundred percent free for qualifying children, um, and specific, you know, at the younger ages too. So we think that's probably siphoning some of ours away, cause their, their target for the county is about four hundred kids. So that, that's, that's a little bit of a dent um for us. But I'm confident as, as we get closer and parents realize school's gonna be out in a few weeks.
Yes.
Um, yeah, the, the registrations will uptick a little bit.
Outstanding, outstanding work by the, the folks at Tobias School and the other schools that run similar programs as well. So great, great, thank you, Joseph.
Just a quick question, are we able to, permission to upload this, to share this information as well, so that everyone can see it?
Uh, I would defer to the filmmaker and, you know, um, his name is on here somewhere.
Chris Joe.
Yeah, I would, I would ask him.
Yeah, okay.
I wouldn't do it without permission.
Or else wait until they upload it and then we can link to it. You mean on Facebook, right?
They, they did put a teaser out, they put a trailer out about a month ago or so.
On your, your Facebook, Daily City?
On Face, on a couple of different Facebook and
Which I'm friends with, by the way.
Yeah, we'll, we'll keep you informed when, when it's
I was about to ask you that.
And, and safe to share, but I, I don't wanna spoil it for the kids, they're gonna be bringing their families to the premiere either, so.
We won't say a word.
Very excited.
We won't say a word. No one's listening, okay.
Okay, well, it looks like we're moving on to um the upcoming um events here for announcements and communications. And um, uh, we have
Unless there's commissioner reports.
We have the health.
Yeah, let's go with the commissioner reports, excuse me, my fault. Do we have any events that there are commissioners participated in that they'd like to share with the, our public here? This, that they experienced since our last meeting?
I wasn't able to be there, but I got, uh, we had, uh, through Duggins where I work, we had a table and uh, the feedback was amazing for the first annual youth, I, I don't wanna say it, the health
The active adults slash senior fitness and resource fair, I think I got that right.
Anybody attend? I heard it was amazing, yeah.
There was a line out the door and, and right as it opened, they distributed over three hundred, or I guess exactly three hundred gift bags to the, the first three hundred people through the door. But yeah, it, it was very well attended.
Yeah, so we're looking forward to the next year. So it's not every six months, it'll be once a year kind of thing?
It was the first time we did anything like that, so we'll probably look at an annual event.
Do we have any other events we missed?
Not so much events, but just awareness. Um, with all the um activity and constructions that is going on in the, the Cerro Monte Mall and surrounding communities there for general public, just drive safe. Because um, sometimes people are not looking where they're walking or drivers are not driving where they should. And uh, so beware, there's a lot of constructions going on out there and uh, don't want anybody to get hurt.
I'd throw out, um, whatever you do, be careful when you're leaving anything in your car. So we experienced that um on Sunday, I, some of my Facebook friends saw, but it wasn't my car, but three people I knew had their car broken into and they bash a window in and they take whatever they can see, so. Don't leave anything in your car, cause I hear it's a big, people are doing that more and more often, so be safe, yeah, yeah.
It's happening often. I, it's been around my home area as well, so yes, don't, don't leave anything. Uh, keep it nice and simple, you know, so that people don't really call your attention. Not even just a jacket, they can say, well, something's inside the jacket. But yes, um, keep it nice and simple, I mean, you know, in the car.
There you go. Great tip, great tip.
The graduates, you wanna send a message out to those graduates?
Definitely, it's the season for the cap and gown folks in the community, our high school graduates, our middle school graduates and our elementary school grads that'll soon come up to the middle school level. Uh, congratulations to all their efforts, um, in, in their school efforts. And um, congratulations to the parents for raising their youngsters through the program and being there for them and supporting them as they um go through their school year and gallect them in the future and uh, in their next journey in education. So um, again, thank you very much to them and uh, good luck to you again for the summer.
Thank you.
Do we have any other commissioners' report that we'd like to share?
Any attending, anything? I, I would just say is that I attended the uh, this, both Jefferson and West Moore's uh, high schools uh, senior awards night, uh, participating. And I just wanted to say, it's a great group of, you know, youth coming out of Daily City and, and quite proud. None of them are mine, but very proud. It was, it was a moving experience to, to see the, the youth uh, receive their awards. Oh, and through the chamber as well, that was uh, Thursday here. Um, and Thursday was, it was packed and it was, it was really nice to see the young people. And I think the best part was when it was here, the Daily City coma chamber of commerce gave out numerous, was it close to forty? Forty scholarships.
I believe it was thirty-seven.
Oh, I'm sorry, thirty-seven thousand dollar scholarships to the high school students. And when they came through and they accepted it, they asked them where they were going and whether, where they were going and what they were gonna study. And the ones that got the most applause were the ones that said, because everybody was doing business and nothing wrong with it, business and computers and all this. But when someone said they were gonna be a teacher and a nurse, uh, people just cheered for them. It was, it was, you know, we need, we need every type of, you know, person, so. And to the youth, you guys are, are you guys high school students? Are you seniors? Oh, you're a senior, what school? Jefferson, yay, alma mater. So um, so were you at any of those events?
No, I wasn't at the senior awards.
No senior awards, it was really nice, it was really nice. But, and congratulations, and where are you going to school?
I'm going to San Jose State.
You wanna stand up and say that? Come on.
I'll be going to San Jose State.
Awesome, and what are you gonna study?
I'll be studying humanities.
Yeah.
I'm gonna transfer into nursing.
Nice, see, a nurse and humanities. Isn't that appropriate for someone who helps save people?
Absolutely.
That's what you were smiling about. Thank you for doing that. We hope to, when we're old, older and grayer, we're gonna have a nice, wonderful nurse to take care of us, we hope.
Did you say grayer?
Well, you know.
Oh, well, we'll skip that. Okay, without no, no further commissioner reports, uh, we're on to the announcements and communications. And um, we have a summer kickoff carnival that's happening on June tenth, that's a Saturday, uh, between twelve-thirty and two-thirty in the afternoon. It's going to be held at the Jimona Pool at one thirty-one West Moore Avenue. And there is a fee, uh, a nominal eight-dollar fee. And also, there's uh, an Independence Day celebration sponsored by the supporters of the Dolger Incorporated. And that's gonna be held on June thirtieth of this year, that's a Friday, between eleven AM and one thirty PM at the Cafe Dolger, that's within the Westlake Park area. And come and enjoy the barbecue and entertainment and the numerous vendors that'll be participating. So that's it for the announcements.
Unless I can slide in a couple more quick ones in our I know we're, we all made friends with the wonderful Daily City Baseball Association. They're winding down their season two and if you're interested in watching the championship games, those will be happening at Westlake Park on Sunday, June fourth. First games start at two and uh, they'll go through six. And so they're gonna have their championship games and they're also gonna have an end-of-season get-together barbecue out there at Westlake Park.
Okay, thank you.
And uh, it'll be just in time to transition from Daily City Baseball Association to the Junior Giants, we'll be starting right about the same time. And uh, registration is open now at juniorgiants.org. Uh, spots are filling up, some of the age groups are already at capacity, but uh, you know, there's, there's room especially for the older kids. Um, especially at the south campus at Geller, Geller. Westlake, I think, is uh awful, but uh, it's a great program and it's free. And now is the time, if you're thinking about it, don't think too much longer.
And you get a glove, a free glove.
You can get a free glove and lots of other free stuff.
Yeah.
So the, the what, the site to register on is juniorgiants.org, okay, got it.
And look for the Daily City.
And, okay, great, great. And um, bring that we don't have any cards for um, some speakers here. I just wanna thank the audience, the participants that came here this evening and supported the uh, the efforts for tonight. And um, again, special recognitions to the folks that uh, went beyond the call of duty at the Jimona Pool for um, doing a life-saving awareness of helping one of our, our community members there. So uh, thank you uh, for that and uh, again, congratulations to the supervisors for training your staff so well. And um, again, without further ado, uh, do we have a motion to end this evening's meeting?
I motion to end this meeting.
A second data motion.
Okay, this meeting is now adjourned, thank you.